All right, we will start the meeting with a pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here and on Facebook to our January 6, 2022 Village Board Meeting. Our first order of business is a public hearing to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year going to the authority grant in subdivision 5 of general municipal law subsection 3-C. Mo, can I get a reading of proof of publication?
Sure. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to section 7-706 of the village law of the state of New York and pursuant to resolution of the village board of the village of Baldwinsville adopted December 16, 2021, a public hearing will be held by the village board at the regularly scheduled online remote meeting on the sixth day of January 2022 at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year pursuant to the authority granted in subdivision 5 of general municipal law subsection 3C. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party by contacting the office of the village clerk. Due to the COVID-19 crises, persons wishing to be here need to contact the village clerk to obtain a password to participate by Zoom video conferencing by order of the village board of the village of Baldwinsville.
Thank you, Mo. Anybody on here wanting to speak in favor of the proposal? Anybody wanting to speak against the proposal? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing? Andy, Mike Shepard with a second, all in favor? I, opposed, carried. And a second public hearing to hear comments regarding the tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning March 1, 2022 and ending on February 28, 2023. Can I get a reading and proof of publication?
Please take notice that the Board of Trustees of the village of Baldwinsville pursuant to resolution of the village board adopted December 16, 2021, will conduct a public hearing at the regularly scheduled online remote meeting on the sixth day of January 2022 at 7:35 PM to hear comments regarding the tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning March 1, 2022 and ending on February 28, 2023. The compensation proposed in said budget for the mayor is $15,300 per year, $25,500 per year for the deputy mayor, $5,100 per year for each trustee, and $23,721 for the village justice. Copies of the tentative budget are available during normal business hours in the office of the village clerk on December 30, 2021 by order of the village board of the village of Baldwinsville.
Thanks, Mo. Anybody willing to, interested in speaking in favor of the proposal? Anybody wanting to speak against the proposal? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Should we keep this public hearing open, Bob, until the next meeting?
Well, if you want to keep, I mean, you can adjourn the public hearing and vote on the budget at the next meeting. If you want to keep it open and have public comments at the next meeting, then you can adjourn it and keep it open.
Anybody have any preferences? Well, I would just ask for a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing. Andy, you got a second from Ruth, all in favor? I, opposed, carried. All right, we'll move on to the regular meeting of the village board. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from December 16, 2021? Mark Wilder with a second, Andy, any changes, questions on the minutes? All in favor? I, opposed, carried. I don't see Jeff Rogers. And we do have Danielle Borelli.
Hi.
Hi, Danielle.
How are you doing?
Go ahead, explain to the board why you're here. We usually give people about five minutes, so.
Sure. I was just wondering, I'm gonna, I was interested in opening up a hot dog cart here in the village of Bevo. And I looked at all the criteria of how to do it with the Anadaga County food cart. And I was wondering, in the village, do you need a special license for that? If I wanted to go to Mercer Park? Or if I wanted to go into the little center of town where the Christmas tree was? What is the, have you ever had a hot dog cart there? And would you be interested in having that in your village in the summertime?
Well, I don't think we've ever had one at the square like that tied to the Christmas tree. We've had them around the village. This is something that came up recently and our codes officer is looking into establishing a code for food trucks. And I guess that-
Oh, nice.
-hot dog truck would qualify, even though it's gonna be small, it would still qualify as a food truck. So because there are certain concerns with public health, with, you know, if we told you, you could be in a certain parking lot and somebody else came along and parked there. Now we're gonna have, you know, a duel in the parking lot to decide who gets to stay there. So we would, we would try to set up code for covering where these can be, how often they can be, whether there's gonna be a fee to register with the village, similar to what we do with trash haulers. You know, they have to register and they can't, no other trash haulers can come into the village other than those registered. We would do the same thing with food trucks. We obviously have some concern over protecting some of our permanent businesses. So that, you know, if we have eight food trucks a night around the village, it's going to hurt some of the regular businesses, I think. So we are trying to see what other communities are doing and maybe establish something ourselves and we would certainly get back to you and let you know what was going on. We've certainly got time weather-wise to work on that.
Mine is, mine is a different kind of truck. It's going to be a mobile bicycle truck. I'm ordering it from Albuquerque, New Mexico. It has all the codes and everything to wash your hands. It has everything that you can, it's all up to code. And I have all the plans on it and everything, so it would be mobile. It could be, you could push the car or you could drive it around the whole town. So you don't have to be put in one section. I did notice that when you do have events in Baldwinsville that you do need a special permit for the day for that, if you're gonna do like what they do at farmer's market. So it's not gonna be like I'm gonna leave it in one area. It would be, I'm bicycling it around. And it's also solar, it's also solar and electric and it has a lithium battery. So I would really like to know, like about that, if it's mobile, if it's different, if you're not set in one area to take, I would not want to take business away from anybody in Bevo. It's just something I'd like to do in the summertime, you know, and go around all of Bevo. Kind of like back in the day when, in the seventies, when they had the ice cream truck. You know?
Greg, you have any thoughts, comments?
Well, most of what I'm seeing with regard to food trucks is those food trucks that set up in a stationary location, whether it's in a parking lot or a park or, you know, next to a retail establishment like WT Brews partners with a number of food trucks throughout the summer. It's normally those type of situations. Most of the code that I'm reading doesn't address like the ice cream truck that goes through the neighborhoods. I think that's something that we should probably look at to see what concerns we might have. I mean, it's just something that we haven't really looked hard at as far as mobile food trucks. One reason that people are starting to look at it is New York State has started to put codes in effect that have just come back for code enforcement officers to inspect as well as looking at, you know, zoning type issues. So I'd like to take a look at, you know, what you have. If you could get me the specs on what you have, I can give you my email address.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
I have a, I have a quick question. Has there been any thought to, if it does become a busy, a busy thing for cleanup? I mean, lots of times when the food trucks come in, they have their own garbage, you know, for their garbage or they're in a spot where we have cans and what have you. But depending on where you are, is there any provisions for that or no?
You're asking Danielle?
Yes.
Oh, can you repeat that? Because my, my phone is not that great with the volume for some reason. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just had a quick question is, you know, if it is, does get to be a busy, you know, a busy truck for, do you have any provisions on cleanup, you know?
Oh, yes, it has a sink. It has-
I mean-
When he, when he looked at the code, the guy, in order to order this special truck, he has to look at all the codes for Anadaga County. And he has to look at all the sanitary and everything like that to wash your hands, because you have to wash your hands very often.
Danielle, he's talking about your customers getting done with their hot dog and then discarding the wrapper.
Oh, I probably would have a, you know, probably a garbage can right there and dispose of it myself. I just would, I would just have to know where I could dispose of the garbage. If you guys have recycling, I, I'm from Baldwinsville, but I moved from New York City. So the recycling is really strict there. So if you're using the cardboard things, I would probably have to check into the recycling. That would probably be the biggest thing, because I don't know, I know, I'm sure you're pretty strict here with recycling as well.
Yeah. My suggestion right now is that you keep in touch with Greg. And as Greg uncovers more stuff and as we, as a board, look at more ways to handle the food truck business, we will get more information to him. But Greg Humphrey, who's our code officer, is the contact that you want to have.
Okay. Does he, do you have a phone number, sir?
Sure, it's 315.
Okay.
635. 24, yep, 2481.
Okay. And, okay, is that easier to get in touch with you that way or email?
Right, you can, yeah, you can give me a call in the morning and we can exchange information.
Yes, I have all the specs on it and everything. So we're just, you know, I'm looking at it, it's, I, also, I was gonna do coffee and bagel, but with that, you have to have a commissary. And I don't think there's a commissary in the area where you have to refill your coffee. It was just, it's a really nice idea to have for Bevo, I thought.
All right, well, thanks for stopping in and make sure you keep in touch with Greg, because-
I will, thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate you listening to me.
Okay, nice to see you.
And nice to see you too. Have a great day. Bye, guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, thank you.
We now have Jeff Rogers on board. And Jeff is asking for a waiver of the 30-day notification for liquor license. Is that my understanding? Am I right?
Yes, sir.
This is for his new, in case you didn't know, his new venture over at the old Lock 24, going to be called the Lock 24 Smokehouse.
Actually, I changed it. It's now gonna be called Angry Smokehouse. I'm actually gonna ride the coat feathers of Angry Galaxy.
Angry-
Why wouldn't you?
Yeah, Angry Smokehouse, yeah.
Very good.
I apologize that I was late getting to the meeting. Thankfully, the restaurant's getting murdered right now, so.
In this case, that's good news, right?
I'm sorry, though, I'm late. I apologize.
So this is on the agenda for later for us to consider voting on it. But if anybody has any questions for Jeff regarding waiving that 30-day waiting period, now's the time to ask.
I don't, I don't have it later in the agenda. I thought we would just do the motion when he was here.
Okay, fine, all right.
Someone would just have to say it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Bruce, did you have something?
No, I just wanted to order a rack of ribs. I don't wanna, I wanna be at the, up in front in the line. I don't wanna-
You had to give more notice than that.
Wait till you see the smokers I ordered for this place. I have three smokers. Two of them are gonna be going outside and one's inside, indoor smoker that goes under my hood system. They are gorgeous. They are absolutely gorgeous.
The village ought to smell real good.
Yep.
And stuff floating around. All the boaters going through will be hypnotized.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Well, I think in the past that you just usually ask when they're opening or why the 30-day waiver is necessary.
That was what I was gonna ask. Thanks, Mo. I was gonna say that.
Oh, I didn't want to waste his time for coming.
I know, I know.
I wouldn't say it's necessary. No, of course, it's not gonna make or break it for me. However, the state liquor authority is already seven months is what they're at right now on an average for liquor licenses, for the permanent liquor license. And they're four to five months out even on a temporary license. So the reason I was requesting the 30-day waiver is simply to expedite the process, so I don't have to wait another month to apply for the liquor license. Because then I'm looking at opening up in, you know, probably mid-June to early July. And my goal is to open by Memorial Day weekend. I have Randy Reinhardt, who I'm sure you all know, is gonna be my GC on the job. And we have, I mean, everything's done, blueprints are done, everything's done. So as soon as the final SBA loan comes through for the rehab part of it, we could start tearing that place apart and get it open, hopefully by Memorial Day weekend. So that was the reason that I was requesting the 30-day waiver, is just to expedite the liquor license process, because they're so far behind right now.
How much of a change will the outside show?
Outside, very minimal change. I'm, I'm toying with the idea of putting a bar out there, which obviously I would talk to the village about. And really, that's it for a change in putting two smokers outside. One of them is what's called a barrel smoker. It's one of the traditional long smokers that you would see going in front of the building. It kind of has a showpiece. Obviously, I would use it as well. And then behind the building, I would probably take up two of the parking spots to extend a pad so that I could put a big cabinet smoker behind the building. But that's it exterior. We're gonna redo the parking lot. It needs a lot of work, so we're gonna redo the parking lot. We're gonna re-stripe it. The lights, those huge tall lights that are on the backside of the parking lot are leaning towards the house behind it. So we're gonna fix that and get those lights fixed up. You know, the fence that's behind the parking lot, there's sections of it that are in disrepair. That section isn't, I don't own that section, but I'm gonna talk to the neighbor next to me there. I believe it's a salon, to see if, you know, she'll, you know, I don't mind splitting the cost there to get it looking good again. It looks terrible. So I just want to fix it all up, get the parking lot in good condition and the exterior. You know, we're gonna paint it, obviously. We're gonna get the light tower working again. I'm excited about that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it hasn't worked in a long time. And Randy and I went up there and, yeah, it's not a problem. We can get that running again, which will be kind of neat, having that light tower working again.
It's, it's very exciting to know that it's not gonna sit there longer. I mean, you know, every, every week it sits there, you know, it's getting worse and worse shape.
Oh, it's bad.
And to know you're investing in it is pretty exciting, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Does anybody else have any other questions? I mean, I'm already looking for my first rack of ribs out of that place, you know.
Getting in line.
I'm in line behind Bruce, because he requested first. If, if nobody else has any questions, could I get a motion to offer a waiver of the 30-day notification period to the village regarding the Alcohol Beverage Control Section 110-B as regards to the Angry Smokehouse?
Vote.
Zico and Mike Shepard, any other questions for Jeff or comments? All in favor? I, opposed? There you go.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. Again, I apologize for being late to the meeting.
It worked out fine. Danielle got to-
Yeah, if you could stop in the office tomorrow and pick up the letter.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, Jeff, good luck.
All right, have an incredible weekend.
You too.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's kind of exciting news for the village. I've gotta think, you know, all the people who have been complaining about that place still sitting there rotting are gonna be excited now. And it's always good when you know a good businessman's involved. We'll move on now to the rest of our agenda, trustees' comments. We'll start with Megan.
Just the agenda, thank you.
Bruce?
I'll stick to the agenda, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I have just a kind of an announcement. I think everybody's aware that I'm selling my house in Baldwinsville. And I do have a purchase offer that's been accepted and I have a closing date. It really has gone a lot faster than I anticipated. I thought I'd be able to finish my term out, but the closing's in the beginning of February. So I'm gonna put a resignation letter together for you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll get that to you before the next board meeting. But I'll be resigning my position as village trustee effective the end of January. So I apologize that I couldn't finish out this term, but I think that's the way to do this. I don't want to be a trustee and not, not have property in the village, so. So after, you know, having said that, I will be available after the end of January. If anybody has questions about any projects that we're in, we were in the middle of at the DPW, I'm pleased with the progress and the amount of work that we did over the years in the DPW committee and with the board as a whole. I'm, I'm very happy to have been a member of this body. I really appreciate the way everybody worked in a productive and, and manner to move our agenda forward. I think we were responsible fiscal managers, which is the primary job that we have. And I'll miss, miss working with everybody, but, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, current village trustees and all the former ones that I've worked with. It's been a nice experience. I was trying to figure out how many years and Megan and I kind of figured out DPW is probably around 12. I think I had two two-year terms and two four-year terms. So it's gone by in a hurry. I can't really, this is a development that I wasn't really planning on, but that's the way it is, so. You'll get a letter and I appreciate it and won't take up any more time here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and we certainly will miss you. You've been a key cog, both when I was sitting next to you as a trustee and since I've been mayor. I've learned to rely on you and I may be calling you from time to time, you know, just checking out some things that I know you would know about, so. We wish you the best and, you know, we aren't pushing you out the door just yet. You got one more meeting and, and we hope everything is good for Mark Wilder down the road.
Yeah, so long-term plans, I won't be here forever, like in this house, probably, in, in the new house. But, so who knows, maybe I'll, maybe I'll build a house in Baldwinsville at some point in the future. But for now, this is the way it is. So I know you've got a couple of good candidates that are interested in filling the spots. So we'll give some, some fresh blood a chance to be a part of the village board. And I think that's a good thing, too.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Next, Andy.
Sorry to see you go. I think I'll go with you. Other than that, that's all I got. Thanks.
All right. We'll move on to Ruth Seiko. Can't hear you. Just, I'm gonna assume you said stick to the agenda. Mike Shepard, who's beginning to look like Father Claus.
I will reserve my comments on Mark leaving. I know that I'm probably gonna need to be calling him on a bunch of matters. And Andy too, I thank them both for being mentors and bringing all their knowledge to the village. Gonna be missed. Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
All right, thank you, Shep. Um, let's see. I know it sounds crazy, but I don't have a lot of, a whole lot of stuff. I know, I wanted to remind people of the big chill on the 29th of January. You can still sign up teams. You get a team of friends or cohorts or whatever and get some money pledged to you by other people. And then you run and jump in the Seneca River on the 29th in the freezing water and get your head examined afterwards to see why you did it. But you're raising money for good causes. It goes to charity. It supports the chamber. It also supports the Rotary. And then there's other causes that money goes to within the village area usually. And so, and it's always good food. They have the Best of Bowl contest where all the restaurants bring that one item, kind of like the Taste of Baldwinsville. And then you vote on which ones you thought were the best and they get trophies and so on. So it's a nice day and then I think that night, they have a poker walk around the village where, you know, you find out which establishments are taking part. You get a card, you get it stamped at every, you get a poker card or something at every establishment. And then you turn it in and whoever has the best hand wins a prize and the worst hand wins a prize. And it's kind of fun, because you're around the village and you get to see a lot of people. So the 29th of January should be a big day in the village. Don't miss out on the opportunity to do that. Trying to think if there was anything else. I guess that's about all I have right now. I will go on to now to department heads. We'll start with our attorney, Bob.
Just a couple of things. I'm getting back to the food trucks for a second. I had sent to Greg some, some thoughts about the regulation. There should be two, maybe now three, but at least two sets of regulations. One for food trucks in a municipal area like our parks and then another for food trucks that are in, on private areas like a food truck that's, that's taking up space in a, in a private shopping area or something. So we'll work on that. The other thing, it's been a while since, and I can't remember if I sent Chuck this to you or Greg, both, but I had drafted a provision about putting together some procedures for defective sidewalks and being able, allowing the board to declare them as public nuisances the same way that you do with, with certain buildings, which would allow you to assess the cost of repair of those sidewalks against the adjacent property. So I didn't know whether Greg or Chuck, if you want to move forward with that, I can, I can send that in a format that we can put it up at one of the future meetings, but.
I hadn't seen that.
I'm sorry?
I hadn't seen that.
Okay, I'll send it back out to everybody again. But this, this, section 292, or that would, that would, I think, clean up a question as to what the village's authority is relative to defective sidewalks as opposed to the sidewalk projects that we've been working. So I'll get that out. Thank you. And other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Thank you very much, Bob. Quote officer, Greg?
I think for now, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Village clerk, Mo?
I too will stick to the agenda unless anyone has any questions.
Okay, it's your agenda. Why not stick to it, right?
Yeah, it's a good one.
That's a real good one. We'll go to the treasurer next, Mr. Baker.
I thought I would give you a real quick update on, on just how the transition has been going with Hannah and I and on what I've been working on. And mainly, it's been the budget, but, and you've seen the, the results of that. And so the rest of it, I've been moved over to administrator on all the banking relationships that we have, the credit card relationship. I think I'm, I'm joining the employee or the New York State retirement system as a, as a person who works on it. I'm not in it, but, so that's gone well. And then have been spending time establishing kind of a baseline of the village finances. And really, the historical part is the part that I just need to keep spending some time on and understanding how things, how things develop to where they are with different, with certain things. But- How things develop to where they are with different, with certain things, but um. I've been through training with the state, I've been through training with a couple of the vendors, I've been through training with a couple of the banks. Um, and that's all gone really well, and a lot of it is, is stuff that is right up my alley from my work life. Um, moving forward, I just, there's opportunities to um, have some additional controls in place. On process, some process improvements, make things easier for, for um. Probably the department heads and the trustees to do business with, financial business with the village. Um, I think there's opportunities to streamline the banking relationships. Um, I would love to see um, a finance committee. Going forward so that uh, we, we can have a place that we, we talk through some of these things that come up. Only once a year at budget time and, and we, we get them out on the table sooner than that, and there's some, you know, planning like that. And, and to give you better um, reporting and intelligence on what's going on with the village finances. So that you've got a strategic view on it and, and um, your decisions are, are um. You know, based with those things in mind, so that's, that's kind of um. The gist of it, I think from my point of view, it's going really well. Um, it's the only uh, part-time job that I've ever had that I'm working fifty hours a week, but. I'm really not, but, but um, but it's great, it's awesome, and, and uh, the folks at the village hall are amazing to work with. Um, really good people and Mary Augustus has told me about the time when her husband brought me home to my father. Um, I think I was in trouble once, I think Mark Wilder might have been with me that night, but.
No, everybody tries to uh, loop me into their problems, no, I wasn't there.
That's not fair, Mark, it's not fair.
So.
As the attorney, I can tell you could take the fifth on that.
Yeah.
But, well, I, I wanna thank you for the opportunity and um, you know, and I'll wait until next, next meeting to, to um. Give my kudos to Mark Wilder for moving on and enjoying his retirement.
Well, I, I appreciate your positivity, I mean, I, I always, I, things come up that we. You, you know, that aren't what we expected or we have questions and, and you're so, you're always positive, which helps keep me from spinning out of control. So thank you, and I'm glad you're on board.
There's always a solution.
That's right.
Uh, Mayor, just got, we've got one question from our, in your, in your training, did they go over the reserve funds and the procedures? Um, Anna and I had set up uh, reserve funds a few years ago to, in the water area and other areas. And I didn't know uh, if you need to, you and I can talk separately about that, but those are.
Yeah, they did, Bob, and, and I don't, you know, I can't rattle it off the top of my head, but I have a book about it and.
Okay.
I will tell you that they made a really good point, that there are reserve funds which are truly legally reserved. In the village and the board, only the board can unencumber them, so to speak. And then there are funds that we call reserve, which is like, I, we got some, some cash over here, like a rainy day fund.
Yeah.
And that's, it's really not a reserve in the same sense as a, a true legal reserve fund. So, and they said, make sure you don't get that confused, and um.
We, we, we've had people that do confuse that and wanna know why they can't just spend money out of the reserve fund, and say, no, you're talking about. The surplus funds that, you know. More money came in than we planned, and so we've got some surplus, that you can spend, but you, the reserve money is. We have to have a board vote and all that type of stuff, so it's a different situation and uh.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, maybe in the budget, just change the name and put it under the mattress fund or something.
Yeah. Right, right.
Don't be doing anything like that.
I thought we just called it Pepsi money.
Yeah, oh, that's Mark Wilder's thing. Okay, now we're moving on to this, thanks, Mark. Move on to.
Pepsi thing, I don't wanna be associated with that either, so. That's what's gonna happen when I'm gone, everybody's gonna say that was Mark Wilder's fun.
Alright, now we're going to Ruth Troy from the Senior Center, Ruth, what's up?
Just a couple of things, um, since it's the beginning of a new year. I wanna remind folks that they need to renew their newsletter subscription if they wanna continue to get the uh, newsletter physically in the mail, so take care of that. Also, we are updating vaccine information, if you have received your booster, we would like you to share that with us. Uh, bring your card in so we can make note of that, we are strongly encouraging people to please get your booster, that's the best advice from the CDC. Um, so please encouraging you to get your booster, if you are having difficulty finding a place to do that, please come in and see us and we will be happy to help you. Um, other than that, unless anybody has any questions, that's it.
So you have a new um. Activity, the uh, cardio drum thing, that, that looks like a pretty cool activity.
We're gonna try it, actually, one of the seniors uh, asked about it because they had been doing it at home. Uh, via YouTube, and so we're gonna try to do it in person and um, potentially getting some support from the county. For the equipment, so that's a, works for everybody, so we're looking forward to it, at the end of the month, January twenty eighth, if you wanna try the cardio ball drumming.
There you, cardio ball drumming, it's, it's, you have those great big exercise balls and drumsticks and you, music playing and you beat the.
What kids do.
Ball to the, but you keep your arms moving and I'm, I'm sure by the time you're done, you've worked up a pretty good sweat, without even knowing it, so.
Yeah, it's purposeful, uh, the, you know, it's designed to music, but it's purposeful so that there's actually a, a workout happening, but you're having a good time as well, so.
Those are the best.
Yeah.
But every, otherwise, everything's going good at the Senior Center?
Yeah, just one more reminder, um, we do require masking, and also we have masks, if anybody needs them, we do have them. So stop in and see us if you're having difficulty finding a good mask.
Very good.
Ruth, I have, I have one quick thing, Louise is gonna call you tomorrow, she had a, a call from a senior that's having. She's really upset cause she can't get a, a home test kit, I think she made you basically a little confused, but. Um, I just told her, just to forward to you, and you, you probably know them, and uh, you'll take care of that.
Sounds like I might. Alright, thank you, Chuck, I'll wait to hear from Louise.
For people out there, anybody who qualifies to be called a senior, if you have questions about anything, call the Senior Center, six three eight four five six. I mean, whether it's, you know, you're, you're depressed, or you need help getting food stamps, you need, you know, any help getting to a doctor. Call the Senior Center, if, you know, there's all, somebody there will be able to help you, and don't sit there and fret and stew. Let somebody at the Senior Center help you, and uh, that's the best advice I can give you right now, so, thanks, Ruth.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Public Works, Chuck.
Yep, um, once again, Mark, we're gonna miss you, um, you're a cornerstone in our committee and uh, sad to see you go. Um, other than that, the DPW are pretty much in the winter mode now, we are out picking Christmas trees up. Um, we've been through the village a couple of times, and uh, we're gonna continue to do that until a windle down. We are not picking brush up anymore, I'm still getting calls, why would people are raking their lawns and, and picking brush, this is. This is winter, we, we, we're done picking brush up and we'll, we'll get it in the spring. Other than that, uh, unless there's questions, I'll stick to the agenda.
I did see Doug Rowe mowing his lawn about four days ago. But I think, I think he was mulching the leaves.
Could be.
Leaves that had come after blowing down the street and stuff. I'm gonna stop and give him a hard time, but I figured I don't wanna break up work.
Right, and so, some of that equipment that we use to pick, uh, pick brush up is just put away for the winter. And uh, but we're constantly getting calls on why we don't come back out and pick leaves up, and it's just, uh, we'll see you in the spring.
Yeah, okay, and finally, we'll move to the police, Chief Lefencheck.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I, I did just send an email to uh, my record staff to go upstairs to our archival room to uh. Determine what records we actually do have for trustee Wilder and treasurer Baker and uh. It might be up there.
There might be a lot of them up there, with those two.
Don't dig too deep.
Send the box labeled Grand Pacha.
There's a name of the past.
Uh, ju- ju- uh, obviously, anybody who's watching this live, um, we did receive uh, some, some uh. Add-on test kits today, uh, the mayor had members of the police department go pick those up. Uh, we uh, uh, took a, 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 a sizable number over to uh, to Ruth at Canton Woods, she came and picked those up. Believe uh, they'll start to distribute those to the, the people that are under the Canton Woods umbrella, so our senior citizens. And that's who those are going to, and uh, we're limiting those to those folks, and then uh, the village is partnering with uh. Meg Van Patton and her crew over at the library, and uh, the library will be uh, uh, putting out. Uh, an announcement of how they're gonna distribute uh, those uh, those test kits tomorrow and Saturday. Uh, the library still does have a sizable number of, of uh, KN ninety-five masks that we had provided to them. Uh, last week or ten days ago, so though, they have those to distribute as well. So, uh, that's where we are with, with those, so when we get them from the county. Uh, we uh, we immediately turn those out and try and get them to obviously our, our vulnerable population through, through the Senior Center and then uh. To the rest of the community through the, through the library with Meg Van Patton and uh, and, and her team, and, and that seems to have worked well so far. So, that's where we are with that, and uh, Mayor Lester's questions for anything else.
Um, I have none, any questions for the chief? Um, alright, I have two things, um. I have a message that, um, the town of Lysander will be distributing masks Saturday morning. Starting at nine o'clock at Lysander Town Hall, so if somebody can't make it to, to the village, uh, you can go over to Lysander, they have masks. I, I do not know specific plans for uh, Van Buren, I'm assuming they got masks. Um, and Mo mentioned something to me earlier today and I forgot to bring it up. Uh, we had talked last summer, I think, at the end of the summer, about coming up with a park committee to reconsider. Um, you know, the, the fees that we charge for use of the pavilions and the gazebo and the softball fields and things like that. Um, is there anybody on this board that would be interested in being on the park committee? Um, Ruth Seiko? Um, anybody else that? Megan? Now, do you think, Mo, we should have somebody from your group as, you know, like Jody or somebody be part of that?
Yes, Jody will be part of that committee.
Alright, I, I, I think that's probably a big enough, we don't need more than three people, do we? You get too many people, you can't get them together, you know, three people ought to be nice and easy to get together. Um, so I would say, Megan, uh, Ruth, if you would contact Jody. And, you know, obviously, you don't have to do, you don't have to meet tomorrow, uh, but before the nice weather gets here, if we could set up. Uh, there might be some other questions on some of the forums that we, that people question that we can mix cleaner or smoother. Um, but I wanted to make sure, and I, I didn't wanna disappoint Mo, cause she did ask me to do that, and I. Mo does the agenda and I don't like her mad at me.
I did email the board, so they, everyone was, I received comments about it, so.
Okay.
We're good, you did good.
Very good. Got it once in a while, um, now we move on to pending business. Um, can I get a motion approving the proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year? Pursuant to the authority granted just in subdivision five of general municipal laws subset three dash C. Got Mark Wilder, I get a second, Andy? Can I see your hand?
Yeah.
Yep, Andy, second, just for people paying, watching that aren't sure, this doesn't mean we're planning on going over the tax cap. But if something were to happen in, you know, the next month or two, that suddenly. Something in our revenue stream collapsed and we were gonna have to go over the tax cap to not crash. Uh, we won't get penalized if we've, if we have this law in place, so it's protection for us, protection for the village finances. And we have a motion in a second, and all in favor? Aye? Opposed, carried. Um, item B, discussion, also a motion adopting the proposed village budget for the fiscal year, March first, twenty twenty-two through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Now, we vote to accept the proposed budget and then come back in a couple meetings and, and do the final budget? Or is this it, once we approve it?
That's it, so I think we should just table it.
Okay.
And we'll have it on the agenda for next time.
Okay, and what, can I get a motion to table this item? Megan? Second, second from Ruth, all in favor? Aye? Opposed, carried. So that will be on the next agenda, anybody in the village who wants to see what we have as a proposed budget is. There's, is, it's available, you can get a copy at Village Hall, uh, call first and give people heads up that you're coming down. Um, and at this point, we, we are not raising the tax uh, rate at all. Uh, we haven't in three or four years, and we understand it's our duty to try to keep it there. Uh, so. You're more than welcome to take a look at it and see if you have any questions, and we'll try to answer them, and the next meeting we'll, we'll vote on it. Um, new business, can I get a motion to accept the resignation of DPW employee Ken Spitak? Effective date being December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Bruce moved, in a second, Mark Wilder? Just so everybody i- is aware, Ken has been elected to, is the highway supervisor in the town of Lysander. And we wish him a lot of luck, uh, but obviously, couldn't stay with us. Uh, don't think he was interested in two jobs and couldn't do it anyways, but, um, so we have an opening. And we have to officially recognize Ken's retirement, resignation, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye? Opposed, carried. Any other business that we need to address before we uh, pay bills and adjourn the meeting? Seeing none, can I get a motion to pay bills as audited? Mark Wilder and Mike Shepherd seconding, any questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposed, carried. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight nineteen? Where are you? Mark Wilder? Andy seconded.
Mark.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye? Opposed, carried, see everybody in two weeks.